Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 22, 2019, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski is excused, and I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For item three, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is community comment. Is there any community comment this evening? Any community comment? Hearing none, then we'll move on to item five. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? All right, hearing none. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, June 19, 2019, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting here on Wednesday, July 10, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Item eight, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Item eight A, new principal and associate principal introductions. Dr. Miller.
I am privileged to introduce to you this evening two new leaders who will join our fabulous team. I've asked each of them to share a little bit with you about who they are and keep it really informal. So we'll begin with Dr. Bridget Kilmer-Mobry, and she will be our new principal of Southwood Glen. So if you would just share a few things with the board, we would really appreciate that.
Thanks, and I'm very happy to be here tonight, and I'm very happy to be joining the Franklin team. A little bit about myself, I've been in education for 21 years. I taught at Fox Point Bayside where I was a middle school teacher and an elementary teacher, and then my family moved to Appleton, Wisconsin, and I'm currently in the Nashua Joint School District where I've been serving for 12 years. I was originally hired as a math coordinator in the district, and then in my second year became a math coordinator slash principal in one of our smaller buildings, and I've been at three different buildings in Nashua. I'm currently at Buttermore, one of our bigger buildings, and had the privilege of joining a team that was working through some of the focus work. So they were on a needs improvement list, and we did some work around increasing achievement and closing gaps and reached a significantly exceeded expectations rating. So that was some exciting work. I'm really excited to join the Southwood Glen team. I know about their excellent reputation and the work that they do around high achievement. I'm really committed to the same kind of work that the district is with closing achievement gaps and working towards equity and keeping that high achievement throughout that process. My husband has been working down in the area for a few years, and so our family is relocating to the area, so I'm excited to be in the process of moving here, but far more excited to be joining this team. I look forward to working alongside the Southwood Glen team and the Franklin team as we learn together and work to continue the excellent tradition here.
Welcome to Franklin Public Schools. Perhaps a very familiar face to us, and we're all very excited that she's moving into this new role. This is Alejandra Ovea Korlik.
Hi, guys. So I'm really excited to be here. I'm so happy that I have had the opportunity to speak to you all before, and so in this new role, I guess I kept thinking about what I wanted to talk to you about because I have been here for the last 11 years, the simplest of my career. As you know, I've served as a world language coordinator, a summer school principal, as part of the data team, part of the school improvement team, and a lot of other leadership positions. And I kept thinking about, what did I want you to know? And the reality is, I want you to know that the reason that I've been able to serve in all these teams and am in this position is because I have had leaders who have invested in me consistently in this district, leaders who have believed in me, who have tapped into my strengths, who have helped me see what my weaknesses are, and helped me grow as a learner, as an educator. And so now the opportunity to continue to grow and learn in this district is something that I could absolutely not pass up. This is honestly a dream come true to be able to work with Erin and Jake. This is my ideal position, and I'm really, really excited to continue to work and grow and learn with this team, and just thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Then we'll move on to item eight B, the school improvement plan update with building principals. Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, good evening. So our principal team is here in full force this evening for the final time this academic year to share with you all the good work that's been occurring over the last several months related to the school improvement plan. And so we will follow a similar format to what we've done previously. You'll notice I placed a reference sheet at your seat similar to what we've used in the past with some potential areas of listen fours in terms of the rotations we're going to be doing tonight. Also, a quick reference to some of the assessments that you're going to hear referenced, just to refresh your memory on what those are. And then also, you'll notice in the bottom right, a designated start position tonight for the first school in the rotation. The boards are clockwise in alphabetical order by school, so we start with Ben Franklin over there, and we'll rotate this way. So if you could start at that initial district that's on that sheet for you. And then we'll have about five minutes to interact with our principals this evening at each rotation, and then I'll signal all of us to rotate, and then we'll move through all seven schools. Okay? All right, why don't we get started? So we'll let the principals move.
As I walk around and listen, although I've listened to this before, I really feel like we're solidly on our feet with our coherence planning process and what we intend to do, and we understand it so much better than we did when we started. And just that is because of the hard work that you've done and the commitment you've made to the work, and I'm very excited about next year. And then I'd like to thank Mr. Cohen for his leadership and helping us to get to this point this evening, so thank you very much. If you have other commitments tonight, you're working really hard this time of year, please feel free to move on this evening, and that would include our guests as well. I know Dr. Mobry's traveled from the Appleton area, so if you need to head back, please don't feel like you have to stay this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item eight C. We have an update on board goal number two with Ms. Elihausen and Mr. Nielsen.
Yes, we do. Oh, this is the more, okay. So at our retreat last, I think it was last August, we came up with two board goals. The second one read, "By the end of 2018-19 school year, the board will develop a recognition system that honors staff and community in alignment with district recognition systems." And so I was working with Ms. Elihausen on this, and it had been a while since we had really looked at this since the board retreat, and it was kind of hard to get started, you know, to figure out, I mean, if you really read the goal and figure out what we were trying to get at, it was kind of hard to have direction in that. What I think I kind of ultimately ended up with is we're doing a lot of this goal already, so to have a goal, to set this as a goal is something that I think we're kind of already doing. As a, for instance, one of the things that we came up with, and I really appreciate the time you put in on it because we were both kind of sitting there figuring how we're going to move this thing forward, but like at the start of the year, welcome back appreciation message from the board to staff and, of course, attending the welcome back meeting that we have. And then a board proclamation to kick off Staff Appreciation Week. Those are two things that are already in place. There's some thoughts about maybe trying to do something in the middle of the year or around January, February, but we'd have to kind of flesh that out as to what we might want to do in that regard. We were both in agreement that with regard to community recognition, we're going to continue the Friends of Franklin Award. But I think where the board might struggle is when we try and find a way to recognize individual staff at the board level, they're already kind of doing things like that in the district, and admittedly, they're having some struggles in just what some of the programs they're putting together. That Valley's going to put together a team to look at some of the things that the district is already doing right now. So I guess I was coming into this meeting tonight looking for more direction from the board, or if this is something we may want to discuss at the next board retreat, or do we want to just pivot and not really look to complete this goal in that I think it's a goal that we're already doing. So if those that were at the retreat, if they can think back as to how we kind of got to this particular goal, I'm open for feedback as to some of the things you were thinking when we wanted to take this goal on. And Valley, if you wanted to add anything to that, feel free. Let her know.
I think Tim summed it up pretty good. We looked at it from the board level roles and responsibilities and really just tried to think of what can we shore up? What are we already doing that we can kind of shore up and acknowledge we're doing? Where might we have a gap in that annual look at a school calendar from recognition from the board? So that's where the beginning, the middle, and the end pieces came from. And then with Friends of Franklin, it was really more, how can we just improve that so there's a greater level of awareness around it, whether it's the promotion or marketing pieces of it so that there's acknowledgement of how to go about and make sure that we're using that tool to the best of its ability.
The one part I forgot to mention, I think, in that we as a board appreciate all the staff and what they all do, and to, I don't know that we want to get into a situation where we're necessarily singling out or recognizing an individual staff member. I think that's something that might be more best left to the district level and maybe a peer-to-peer type recognition and nomination process than a board process. But again, I'm open for more discussion on this. If there are any.
I like the idea of doing something mid-year. I mean, some kind of, I don't know if you want to call it a proclamation like you did, you know, you said it, the board proclamation in May, yeah, that's nice to do. We don't really do that yet. I think the district does that. So I like that in May, but I do like something mid-year, some kind of statement from the board. I think back when we did the goal, there was more talk of having a board presence at functions, but it doesn't always work because the staff works during the day, so it's hard to have a board presence in the buildings during the day, and that's what I recall from our goal discussion.
Can you think of anything as what we were thinking about specifically?
I think back to the U-Rac awards, and I know we talked about that, and we were talking about giving out awards, and then we said something like, oh, they have the U-Rac awards already.
And that was one of the things, one of the programs we were talking about, Valley was talking about. That's one of the areas that's going to be reworked and looked at essentially, right?
Yeah. With probably much of the work that you saw with employee engagement, many of the sites have, one of the tenants of engagement is around development and recognition, so many of the sites have also started site-based recognition programs. And so we have to be able to make sure that we have alignment between our systems so that U-Rac, how does it fit now with those staff-based or site-based programs and making sure that we are honoring recognition in the way it should be throughout the year for employees? And that is more peer-to-peer based or principal-to-staff-member based recognition.
And just for the record, I'd like to say Mr. Sprague is excused at 7:03 from the meeting.
Could we do something where we maybe had like a gathering here at the ECC after school one day and had light refreshments and cookies and just invite the staff here just to all mill around? And if we as board members were there and just, you know, said thank you and, or, you know, what's going on in your classroom or something like that, would that be something we could do? You know, just invite, you know, send out a general invitation and, I don't know.
Certainly.
I'm up for that. Would they want to stay?
Or just pop in, you know, come in and have some punch or a cookie or, I don't know.
Well, we don't know until we try it, right? You know, and maybe that's the mid-year thing you're referring to, Janet?
Yeah.
I would like to indicate that, you know, the messages that Ms. Evans has been putting in the monthly Franklin Find, I feel are very positive and demonstrate that the board is interested in the work of the school district and is interested in what they do. So I think that that should continue, and I see that as a form of recognition from the board when on behalf of the board, Ms. Evans shares what she appreciates about what they do, and there's a monthly opportunity to do that, and that's been happening, and I know that means something to our employees. So they feel good when they read something from the board that says, thank you for doing good work, or I recognize the work you're doing. So it doesn't have to be an event, it's just sometimes a message that comes kind of regularly, like, we know you're working hard. So I just, I would say that that shouldn't be minimized.
Is that something new to this year?
Right, it is. It is new to this year.
I would say that would go toward goal number two then. I think that's excellent. Feeling better about that goal already.
Done. No, it does mean something. It's well done.
So I guess I don't know how to really put a bow on this one other than I think we're doing some of the things, we've been doing some of the things already, and now with this added piece, we can move that into the checked column.
And I think as we get into the retreat, we can look back to see what it is you had as a goal this year as we move forward to what we would do next year, so.
If I could also add that there was a link in, where this opened up in board docs, I think it was, to where there was like the, for goal one, it was like the grid of, I think, if we can add into or create a grid for goal two with the
Things that have happened.
The things that we just discussed, I think that would help encapsulate that a little bit.
Sure. Absolutely.
As far as the Franklin Find, if there's, I try to put in there, you know, things that happened at the board meeting for staff to know, and if there's anything a board member ever would want to have in there that's on your mind, it's due the 10th of every month. So I would just need some time for, if you have an idea, just let me know, you know, before the 10th, if something you want mentioned in there, and then write the article and let me know. No, just let me know your idea, and that's fine too. So if we're all in agreement here that the Franklin Find meets that goal, and then we want to continue with the messages we have.
And we can also think about something mid-year. I'd be willing to kind of think that through.
Thank you, Ms. Elihausen and Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you.
Okay, then, let's see. Eight D is the 2019-20 staffing report. Ms. Elihausen.
Okay, all right, Mr. Nielsen. I have a few slides that we're going to go through to highlight the report and share with you kind of the key findings from the report or just key pieces of the report. So in your packet, you certainly have a copy of the report. The report is fairly final, but there are very movable pieces. As you can see by the calendar in that report, this work really doesn't have an absolute beginning and an end. It is an ongoing cyclical process. We oftentimes refer to it as having one foot in this year and one foot in the next year. Spring, which doesn't feel like it's arrived apparently until today and hopefully stays now, but spring is really the busiest time of this plan in that cyclical nature that we experience in schools around hiring in particular of our certified staff. The movable pieces that I would talk about are within those factors, and some of them are a bit in our control and a bit not. So things like student enrollment, kindergarten is an example, or 4K is an example, and not really knowing who else is still out there, to student migration in and out of our district are not squarely within our control, but things like class sizes and course selection, legal compliance, and then our priorities that we place in the staffing plan that are generated from our coherence plan are certainly things that we take into consideration when this plan is put together. So let's dive in and just take a look at the highlighted levels of the plan. The staffing level for next year is an increase. It's 13.46, to be exact, and we much should be proud of in this increase because the contributing factors to that come from the implementation of our 4K program, our beautiful new building across the street that offers enriched programming for our students, and our growth in general in Franklin. So you see that represented here in the chart from a high level in the certified staffing levels. When you break it down by level, I'll just pull out some of the key pieces. Our elementaries are down, but we certainly did expect that, right? Our sixth graders aren't there next year, but we are going to welcome the class of 2033 in the 4K. That brings with them 200 of our youngest learners at this point in time and 6.5 new FTE to our system. The other thing that we should be very proud of in the promotion and support to the elementary staffing plan is our class size average. So as we sit today, as you know, your class, the class size policy set by the board strives to be under 25 at the lower primary and under 30 at the upper primary, and you can see that we are well within those parameters as we sit here today. And so those are very healthy class sizes for us, and we should be proud of that. The overall FTE at the elementary, again, as the migration in this plan with the new changes, is 17.54 FTE down. At the middle level, we're definitely up. We are up 26.29 FTE at the middle school level in certified staffing, and that comes from, again, a wonderfully enriched program for our sixth graders as they migrate into that building and even expansion within that seventh and eighth grade as well. We're going to see a 50% increase in student population, so that's something to be very cognizantly aware of as we staff around that factor. We're going to have 14 additional classroom teachers, nine additional exploratory teachers, and five additional support in special education and student services staffing. With the way the board approved those courses for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, that created a 50% increase in exploratory courses, and we are running all of them based upon the enrollment. So we definitely have enriched programming there. As you look at the details within the report, you can see how they fall into place in each of those on core or exploratory areas. At the high school level, we do have a slight increase in FTE. We are running our core class size average of 28, so we got a very healthy class size average there. Some of that increase in FTE comes from capstone course enrollment and courses that are running like saber manufacturing in the construction classes where we are partnering with community partners to see stewardship in action with respect to our kids in those programs. So we have some slight increases there. In the district-wide breakdown, you'll see that we have some minor changes, again, increase there, and that is really around supporting 4K and the coordination of 4K, some reorganization to improve our student learning outcomes in the way we structure work, and then increased support and coordination in special education. Obviously then, the next piece of the planning part comes from forecasting and making sure we have labor to meet the demands of the plan, and so our forecast there takes into consideration several factors. I think the biggest one I would point out that I want us to be cognizantly aware of is that atypical hiring year. We have 20 new positions. So when we see a big crop of new teachers to our system, new certified staffing members, many of them are coming from that generation in 4K and the middle school to fill the needs of those new programmatic areas. So much of our hiring this year is around new positions. I also pointed out in the report that we, you know, as we sit here today, and again, this is still a preliminary piece, a point in time, we are at 36 new hires, so from our retirements, our resignations, and then the new positions that we're filling. We do monitor turnover, and there you see our turnover trends over the past three years as compared to the southeastern Wisconsin labor market, which is our primary labor market that we compete against. So it's districts in this regional area, almost to the Madison area and as far north as the Fond du Lac area. And so last year was a much lower year than years prior, and I also have a chart in the report that demonstrates some of that is generated based upon the number of retirements we have from year to year, more than anything in those numbers. And 1819 will be completed as we staff for 1920 when the staffing season kind of comes to its calmest point, which is in the early fall. And so you'll see that chart get updated at that point in time.
If you take retirements out, what is the turnover? Do you have that?
Yes, it's in, it is on
Did I miss it?
It's okay.
Oh, yeah. Okay, let's hear it.
It is on page 10 of the report. So retirements are that burgundy color up there, and resignations are in the blue. So for the 6.02% retirements represented 2.19, whereas resignations represented 3.83.
Tremendous.
And the last thing there is, I will push the exit survey for collection to gather in data from staff leaving our system, and the report also highlights the fact that we do have difficult to fill areas. They're not really new, they've been areas that we've been focused in on at a state level as well as a regional level in many different areas, particularly in the STEM programming areas and the arts as well. So those are my highlights. I'd certainly see if you have any questions regarding the report or anything else you might want to know.
I have one question.
Sure.
In the goal, it says the district staffing plan should support and drive admission aligned to the coherence plan, reinforce board policies, and meet the parameters within overall districting budget process. So you just showed, you know, we have 20 new hires, and I know some of those are 4K. Is any of the, are any of the hires for 4K with, bless you, with the grant? Or is the grant totally towards the up, just everything else besides higher, you know, higher?
Yeah, it's for the program as a whole.
For the program as a whole. So can you touch it all on the budgeting, you know, the 20 hires for the budget right now? I mean, how did we achieve that, staying within the budget? Just?
I am working on that this very moment. So I'm still working on the budget and putting that together, but I've been part of the process all the way through, and we knew going into this that this would be a very difficult year with a lot of moving parts with 4K and opening the new building, and that shift creates extra positions. And that was really a decision we made back before we went to the public to ask for the money. We said, we're not going to ask for money for operating the building, we're going to do that on our own. So that's what'll come out in the budget in June.
And then the FTE will be counted the following year for a state funding perspective.
Right, and again, the net is the 13. So they're definitely new positions, but there are benefits that But there are benefits that come from the new middle school, too, in economies or efficiencies of scale when you have grade levels that are now not at buildings where you might have a two-section building or a three-section building, where they're all in one building, and you can move them within one pod, you sometimes see staffing reduced. So, some of the staffing that's reduced coming out of the elementary as we move into the middle is normalized by class sizes in one building. And then, in addition, you see FTEs down at the elementary level as a result of reduced overall enrollment in some of the exploratory areas. So, where Jim and I work is around that net to make sure that that net is what's within the budget.
Thank you.
One of the areas that we were really cognizant of this year, we had community feedback on, and the board took up the policy of class sizes. And we made some changes in that regard. And I think it was good work. Are you able to put a finger on how that change affected your staffing to keep these numbers where they need to be now in the new class size policy? Do we have an extra one or two FTEs as a result of that? Or the way the pieces moved around, that really didn't correlate? We just have a better distribution to get our class sizes in line?
Yes. So, the distribution is certainly a factor in it, as well as the fact that many of the FTE were actually added this past school year. So, they exist in that base number moving forward into the nineteen twenty school year. So, as we were able to add, if you recall back in August of last year, we added a number of FTE to address class sizes at that time. Based upon what I know today, which is crystal ball, we're assuming those student, that student population is solid. So, unless, again, we see a migration of students in where we need to address the class size, the foundation that we have at the elementaries is supporting that average of twenty-two and twenty-four that I have on, I had on that slide.
Okay. Because I know one of the things from our chairs up here is we have curriculum presentations, and then we do a class size policy, per se. And then, there's other things that go on throughout the year that all come into your budget presentation at the end of the year. But as they're going on throughout the year, there's no dots to connect, and there certainly is no dollar signs to connect as to, okay, what's the ramification of and the effect of these decisions we're making throughout the year? So, that's why sometimes it's, when we get your initial presentation, I mean, look at the number, we're, whoa, you know, no. The last few years, it hasn't been that. It's been pretty good. It's been really good. But this is a pretty significant change this year. So, it's going to be interesting to see how this all plays out. So, good luck.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item eight E is the approval of the twenty nineteen twenty wage agreement between the school board of the Franklin Public Schools and the Franklin Educational Association. Mrs. Allihausen.
So, Mr. Milzer and I met with the FEI regarding bargaining for base wages. We presented to them the initial proposal from the school board. They presented their initial proposal, and we've reached tentative agreement. The motion that you see recommended in your packet represents that tentative agreement where we are at a zero percent base wage increase as part of the bargaining process, and we are seeking approval to issue the two point four four percent increase in supplemental pay. The two point four four percent increase does represent the current CPI or Consumer Price Index as it stands, and keeps us very competitive with the region in terms of what others are offering to staff.
Okay. So, I'm, I keep losing that. Looking for a motion pursuant to Wisconsin statute one eleven point seven zero to approve the twenty nineteen twenty Franklin Educational Association wage agreement that provides a zero percent base wage increase and to approve a two point four four percent wage increase in supplemental pay. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. I can ask if there's any discussion, but we have to be very careful on any discussion on this item. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item, where am I here? Nine, I mean, eight F, approval of the twenty nineteen twenty wage increase for nonrepresented employees excluding the district administrator. Mrs. Allihausen.
Yes. So, the next item up is for the nonrepresented staff, again, following suit with the two point four four percent, which again represents CPI, keeps us competitive, and is within the budget that Mr. Milzer and I are working on. So, we are seeking approval for this so that we can be proactive and prepared for the July one new fiscal year.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve a twenty nineteen twenty wage increase pool of two point four four percent for all nonrepresented employees excluding the district administrator. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
And Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then, item eight G is the discussion of the proposed City of Franklin Tax Incremental District Number Seven. Mr. Milzer.
Yes, the city has proposed another tax incremental district. This one is right next to tax incremental district number five. And again, tax incremental financing is a tool that municipalities use to increase their tax base. And all of the taxing jurisdictions for that area only receive taxes on the original value of the property over the period that the tax incremental district exists. And any growth in that goes to pay off the infrastructure that went into it and that the city put towards it. Currently, for this property, we'd be receiving about sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars on taxes. And I would estimate if it builds out the way it's projected to, that would increase to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes at the end of this TIF. It's southwest of the Ballpark Commons and runs from Loomis Road up to Rossin. The city has added a piece of property formerly owned by the DOT there, which allowed them to kind of restructure how that whole development looked. And they added this TIF number seven to that. And on this property would be high-end apartment buildings. That, we had a discussion of that. The other taxing jurisdictions there were impressed with the company that would be putting these in and indicated that they've seen them other places, and they are very nice apartment buildings. The value of the property would go from about one point five million to forty-eight point nine million, representing an increase of forty-seven point four million dollars. It's a little bit longer TIF, seven years longer than the ones we've had in the past as this one qualifies as a blighted area. It's part of the same development that we approved in the past, and I think represents a significant step towards attracting families to Franklin. The type of high-end development will provide a slight increase in students, but we need an increase in students to stay ahead of the revenue limit. And it provides added value to lessen the long-term tax burden. In general, from apartments, looking at all of them, we get about point one five students per apartment in the city right now. So, where we're at on this, the plan commission approved the development. It'll go to the common council tomorrow night. And then, the joint review board, which is what we're a part of, meets next week to take that up. So, if the board has any thoughts on this, you know, I'd be happy to hear that.
So, you're in favor of this?
I'm in favor of this. I did talk to the city officials and ask that if they were ever going to put apartments into a district in the future to bring us in earlier in the process so that we could take a look at it and make sure that that was going to work out for us. But there were apartments in this whole development before. And this kind of raises the level of those apartments to a more higher-end apartment.
The reason this developer is doing this is because he needs financing from the bank, though. So, the high-end apartments, for the board to know, are, they'll be twelve hundred to twenty-two hundred per, for the rent. You said one point five students per apartment? Oh, point one five.
Right. I think the city's putting in about three point two million in infrastructure. And then, really, they're providing that financing for it. And it's called a pay-go basis. So, it's one of those where the developer has to get far enough into the development where they can access that, and they have to hit targets in order to get that financing. I think it's only supposed to take two years for all of that to come together, and that's forty, whatever it was, forty-seven million dollars worth of apartment buildings.
Anyone have any questions or any comments? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then, next we move on to eight H, Forest Park Construction Transition Update. Mr. Milzer, Dr. Miller.
The, you'll notice that we have new driveway signs out there. They're the ones that are covered, so you can't read them so that they don't confuse you because you're not supposed to follow their direction yet. We continue to get furniture in. The landscapers were back and went about as far as they can for now. We're working on the final placement of machines and ductwork in the engineering areas. And then, just this week, they put the final lift of pavement on the new parking area and the fire loop around the building, as well as the bus loop in front. And they won't be back until all of the old school is down. That'll be one of the last things they do is to pave the main drive again when all of the truck traffic is done. And the lot will get striped next week. So, that's where we're at.
And our students have six days left in the Forest Park, where it'll be actually occupied by students, which is pretty remarkable. So, they're excited. The last day, of course, is Friday, the thirty-first. So, we are getting ready. I was there this week, and there's classrooms with lots of boxes, particularly the art classroom, almost to the ceiling, well-marked. And I believe they're starting to move those in advance, so that's good. We do have our community open house scheduled for September tenth in the evening when we're going to be putting kind of a small committee together to put ideas on the table for that. And frankly, a number of other tours that I think we're going to be asked to give and provide. So, we'd probably like to see a board member participate in that. With regard to the curriculum, we are on track. You, of course, heard from Mr. Reuter at the last board meeting, all the work that's gone into that. But we're well underway and looking forward to the summer work, too. So, that's going well. A budget's been provided to Mr. Milzer for all that great curriculum work. And staffing, I have notes here from our earlier meeting that says nearly completed, but I'm not sure. I think we, you know, as Ms. Allihausen said, it just really doesn't settle for a while. But I know they're pretty close to having all of the staffing they need. And then, Ms. King met with Ms. Hutler from the Food Service Department and just kind of made sure we were clear on the whole lunch line process. And she also met with Mr. Milzer and Ms. Herman and Mr. Stumball to just discuss the whole traffic. So, we've getting ready, and it's exciting. And, yeah. So, if you want to get in there one more time, you don't have a lot of time left. So, feel free to stop by and say goodbye to the old Forest Park.
How's the time capsule coming, things that are being identified?
That I have not gotten an update on. I know that I had heard they were working on, but I'd be happy to find out, and I can send a message to the board.
Yeah. You were going to pull some things from the old school.
Yep. I'll have to get an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item nine, school board liaison reports. We have nine A, personnel and policy, policy thirty-two thirty-six investments. And Mr. Nielsen conveyed to me that the first revision of policy thirty-two thirty-six is to clarify that the types of investment instruments that can be used are only those allowed by law. And the second revision is to eliminate the yearly review of this policy as there is no need to review the policy on a yearly basis. Mr. Milzer, do you have any other comments on that policy?
No, I think that was it. Mm-hmm.
Any questions by the board? Okay. Let's see. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve revised board policy thirty-two thirty-six. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, next is nine B, board policy seventy-three eleven, periodic review of extended purchased services. And Mr. Milzer, explain that we're recommending that this policy be eliminated. The agreements that are listed in the policy are typically for specific projects which generally do not last more than three years. And if a construction project did not, did last more than three years, we would not want to change the architect or construction management firm during construction. Mr. Milzer, do you have anything to add to that?
Just the WASB list of required policies, this is not on it. It's not even a recommended policy. And that we're pretty much constantly reviewing how well our service providers are doing. And that generally, these days, we don't have agreements with them. They're serving at our pleasure, and when we don't want them serving us anymore, we part ways.
So, I'm looking for a motion to eliminate policy seventy-three one-one, periodic review of extended purchase services. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine C, board liaison reports. Do we have any reports? I just want to report that last night I attended the CISA One Delegate Convention in Peewaki, where forty-five school districts convened for the convention. Several new Board of Control members were elected. There are eleven Board of Control members. And then, we proceeded with the Board of Control meeting. I was elected treasurer again, and I'm grateful for that. And basically, that's the, that's the meeting. It just lasts a couple hours, but it's very basic. So, that's all I have to report on that. And then, we'll move on to item nine D, school and community engagement visits. Do we have any of those?
I attended the capstone presentation yesterday at the high school. It was fantastic to see all of our young people, so talented and so engaged and so full of life and just loving what they were doing. So, it was just such a, it was such a breath of fresh air, and it made me feel so proud. So it was just such a, it was such a breath of fresh air, and it made me feel so proud of our students and proud to be part of Franklin. This was a wonderful event.
And you had a student there, didn't you?
Did you have a student there, too? Yes.
Attended the Saber Business Alliance Breakfast yesterday and had a chance to talk with a couple of employers from the area and good things they were saying about students and the way the program was developed. That was good.
I also attended that breakfast, and I was just really impressed that when the awards were given out, that the, the award winners are so humble when they accept those awards, but they all have wonderful things to say about Rachel Fredericks, who's our Community Experience Coordinator. And I guess without her, I don't know if we would be as successful as we are. She's just fantastic, so, and you, too, Mr. Cohen, yeah. So it was a really nice breakfast. And then today, I, I did go over to the library and watched our Franklin Energizer Show Choir, led by Ms. Jamie Schlecht, and it was their final performance. I know they did go to, we were all invited to their school performances today, too. They did a fantastic job. The thing I like about that group is they have so much fun together. And you can just see it in their whole, if you've seen any, you know, any of their performances during the year, they like being together. So it was a great performance. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And then 9D, oh, I'm sorry, 10, School Board Meeting Debriefing. Any comments from the board?
Lots of good work being done at the schools. It means a lot, a lot of work putting in all those reports, everything.
One thing I did see today, I don't know how many of you get the emails from the Education Week, their reports. It reported today that school improvement plans, teachers and administrators don't always agree on those plans. They polled teachers, and 44% across the nation don't support them as much as 67% of the principals do. And so I asked as I went around, and all of our administrators said they, most of their staff is on board with those improvement plans. So they're impressed with their staff in our district. So that was good to hear.
If I could just make one comment. Julie Preman will not be at the June meeting, and so this would be her last board meeting. And I would just like to thank you, Julie, for three years of loyal, dedicated service to the children, particularly our disabled children. So we greatly appreciate everything that you've done for us. Thank you very much.
We're going to miss you. Who did? Thank you, Julie. And it was nice meeting you tonight, too, our new administrators. Future agenda items, item 11. We have a 2019-20 budget presentation on June 19th. Communications update, June 19th. Annual Academic Standards Adoptions, June 10th. And the 2019-20 Budget Draft, Number 1 Approval, July 10th. And then item 12, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:43.